Just another second and we should be ready to go, hang on. Make it official right at seven o'clock. Okay, we're ready mayor, and you're on YouTube.
Go ahead. We ready?
Yep, you were ready.
Okay, welcome to our council meeting, it's Tuesday, September 16th, seven o'clock, and we are ready to get started. Tonight, we'll have a roll call, so everybody can hear it, so Travis?
Here.
Leon?
Here.
Jeff?
Present.
Art?
Here.
And Brian. And I want to note that Brian is ill tonight, he won't be able to make it, and sorry, he wanted to do so, so, sorry about that. We'll move on, we have full quorum in one, so, I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance, would someone please lead it?
I'll do that mayor.
Please repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I also ask if we could have an invocation or an inspirational thought from anyone?
I'll do that mayor.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful day, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to be here in service of our community, we're thankful for this beautiful country we have to live in, for our city and the residents who reside here. Please help us Father to make good decisions, to have the citizens of our city in mind as we make decisions this evening. We're thankful for all that thou has blessed us with, and pray that we can continue to receive the moisture that we need for the coming seasons, and the things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thanks, appreciate that. Like to go straight into the consent agenda.
Do you want to do declarations mayor?
Oh yeah, we should, are there any declarations of potential conflicts of interest with anyone?
Not seeing any in the room.
None seen, then we'll move on to the consent agenda tonight, we'll begin with the September 2nd minutes of city council work session. You've had a chance to review them, are there any items of input, corrections, additions that we need to put in there? Okay, hearing none, I'll go on to item two, the city council regular meeting minutes of the 2nd of September, are there any additions, corrections, anything that needs to be added to that that you're aware of? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item three, the bills, the review of city expenditures from the 30th of August to the 12th of September, the amount of $2,412,122.64. You've had a chance to review those expenditures, are there any issues or items that you want to have clarification, or anything on? Okay, hearing none, then I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Motion's passed, we'll move on to public forum, and tonight in our public forum, we have the Chamber of Commerce report, is Jim there?
Mayor, nobody's here from Chamber of Commerce, and on the public hearing sign up, there was no one signed up for that, and I don't see anyone in the room that would be interested in talking on that, so.
Okay, I do know, just a report, they opened up Les Schwab the other day, and I thought we were gonna cut the ribbon, but I think I've been gone.
I believe that's the 19th, I believe it's Friday, Friday the 19th mayor, I don't have a time on that, but I will find out from Jim, and make sure that all the council members and yourself have a invite in your calendar for what time that is, but it is on the 19th, I spoke to Jim last week, does anybody have a time?
It's at 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM on Friday the 19th, great, thank you Art.
Eight o'clock, so will you get that to Jim, make sure that he's there, Norm?
Yeah, he's aware of it, I actually talked to him at the hometown, the my hometown thing, last, whenever it was, and Monday, and he indicated that that was the date, I just didn't know the time, but I will confirm with Jim, and then I'll also again, make sure that you have it all on your calendars.
All right, let's move on, Jason, do you have building permits and business license report?
Yes sir, so Norm's got it up on the screen there, I guess mayor, I'll describe it to you since you may not be able to see it, currently for the currently for the calendar year, we're up to 202 residential dwelling units, at this time last year, we were at 184, you can see the total last year was 268, so we're nearing where we were for the total of last year, probably could exceed it this year. Fiscal year, we're a little ahead of pace, this time last year, we're up to 39 residential dwelling units, and then for business licenses, there's four new home occupations, and they are on the screen there, if anybody has any questions about those, or any of the numbers for building permits.
Okay, hearing none, then we'll move on to the formal public hearing, we would like to open a public hearing for the fiscal year 25-26 budget amendment, which is amendment number one, so I need to have a motion to go into the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all right, Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in the public hearing for the budget amendment number one, is there anyone in the audience at City Hall that would like to stand up and have any questions or comments?
There's no one here mayor, and again, no one signed up for that.
Okay, then I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all right, Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll go into resolutions then, item number six, resolution 901, 2025, canceling of the November 4th election, and really, we're doing this under state law because of the opportunity that we all had to register for the election for mayor, or for one of the two council positions, I'm grateful for Art and for Jeff, that they stood up and registered to fill another four-year term, and I did as well, so, no one has offered to run for those positions, and we are going to move forward with this resolution, that through state law, we're able to just basically cancel our general election this November 4th, so that we can move on as a city, this is required to do, so, Norm, do you have anything more?
Yeah, just a couple of things to note from mayor and council and the public, there was no one that, the three, the three were the only, the three incumbents were the only filed for these elect, these positions, they ran and opposed, and also, we went through the full time for any other residents to come in and do a write-in ballot, and nobody did that, and so we're past that time now, I will also indicate that this will save the city, just short of $50,000, of not having to run elections for Santaquin City this year, in the budget, so, other than that mayor, as you've indicated, we've indicated the state code and the, in the whereas's and the items here, all of these things are accurate, we've had this resolution prepared by our legal counsel, and we're good to go with it, and canceling the November 4th municipal general election for Santaquin City. And of that, those three will then, are then considered elected, and will be sworn in, you'll finish out your term this year, and will be sworn in on the, I believe it's the first Monday of January.
Or the first meeting of January.
I believe it's the first Monday if I remember correctly, but I'll verify whether it's the first meeting or the first Monday, I'm pretty sure that it's one or the other correct.
I'm honored that we can move forward and continue serving the city, all three of us, so, with all this in mind, I would entertain a motion to accept resolution 0901, 2025, for canceling of the November 4th election.
So moved.
There been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Motion passes, we can move on to the next one, which is the resolution of approval of fiscal year 2025-26 budget amendment number one, this has quite a few little pieces that we need to make sure that we hit, and so, I'm gonna let you go over those Norm.
I'm gonna let Shannon go over those, so that we can have the information there, she's put this together, I appreciate her doing that, I will share a couple of things when she's done, but we'll just go down through these here.
Before you tonight is budget amendment number one for fiscal year 25-26, this budget amendment includes each of the changes to revenue and expenditures for the proposed capital facility plans, and each of the funds that those affect, it also includes the revenue and expense change for the UTV that Ryan will be purchasing, I'm sure Chief Lydus talked to you, he talked to you about that last week.
Last two weeks ago huh?
Yep, so those are the items that are included on this budget amendment.
Yeah, mayor and council, I would also point out that none of these funds, none of these dollars are coming from tax dollars, these are all either impact fees being used to update our master plans, or the donated funds for the UTV for the fire department, the customized UTV for the fire department.
Thank you, I was gonna say, make sure that we mention that on the donation for the UTV, so that it wasn't some outstanding item that would be in front of someone.
That is correct, and that is, that is the donation for that, the donation's a little larger than what we have shown in here, but the outfitting of the UTV will be done under the Friends of Santaquin rather than in the city, but because this is a vehicle that has to be licensed and insured by the city, it has to be purchased by us, and so that's why it's here for you tonight.
Okay, are there any questions on any of the items that are presented on that list? Everybody's had a chance to look at it, are there any questions at all?
I would also mention that we have Chris Thompson in the room from Hanson Allen Luce, who is coming up on the next couple of items, but that, if anybody has any questions for him about those, then he's here for us as well.
Okay, then, I'd call for a motion on the resolution of 0902, for approval of the Santaquin City fiscal year budget amendment number one.
So moved.
Been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Thank you, we can move on to number eight, which is a resolution on strawberry water, reservoir water users agreement, and we're getting into so much water anymore, this is really good, we've gone through this, the last council meeting, we talked about this in some detail also, but now we've got it before us, Norm, do you want to do it, and do you want to invite him to, Chris, to come forward and talk?
Sure, yeah, so I'll just start off, again, in my 18 years with the city, I've always wondered how we would make use of strawberry water, this is a way that we can do that, I think it's very beneficial for the city, I would mention that there's been quite a bit of work, if I remember right, four or five years worth of work, to put the conversion agreement together, which we are not a part of, but we can certainly benefit from, that, my understanding is that's gonna be done this week on the 18th, with the, most of, or all of the entities and the Bureau of Reclamation, and that will be all taken care of, but this essentially allows us to bring strawberry water into the city through a mechanism that quite frankly hasn't existed before this point, and so, I think it's very beneficial, again, we've had our attorney look at it, and we worked through some questions that he had, and I think this is gonna be something that's gonna be good, now, I will mention that there's really nothing on the doorstep, there's nothing that is precipitating this, other than the work that's gone on in the last four or five years, that is now putting this in front of us and allowing us to benefit from it, there's nobody knocking at the door saying, I want to give you some of this water for water dedication, but it leaves that door open to them now, and possibilities that didn't exist beforehand, again, Chris Thompson's here from Hanson Allen Luce, he's also formerly from Spanish Fork City, and has been a long time working with, on this agreement in both arenas that he's been in over the last few years, so if you have questions, I'm sure he's happy to answer any questions you may have.
I also want to thank Chris for coming last time, and going over this with us all, helping us to make sure that we are a part of it, and we have an opportunity to possibly look to the future in ways that will help the city as it grows.
Absolutely.
I would like to have a little bit of a discussion.
Sure.
In my, I'm referencing the work session minutes from September the 2nd, when this discussion was, was very informative, I'm grateful that we're having the possibility of using strawberry water, I noticed in the minutes that it says that eventually, for drinking water, once a new treatment plant is built, is that something that's on the city, or is that on strawberry, who's making that treatment plant?
Okay.
Central Utah.
Yes, yes, Central Utah, and thank you mayor for that earlier, Central Utah is tasked with making sure that the long-term water needs of Utah County, Salt Lake County, up in Heber area, and all the way out to Deschene, are taken care of, and so, in their long-range, 40, 50-year plans, they actually plan for treatment plants all over, and what will be needed, the growth that is projected by the governor's office, and by several entities here at the south end of Utah County, shows that a treatment plant would be needed in the next 10, 15 years, and so, environmental work has been done, or has commenced, to, for a treatment plant in Salem, and, once that is completed, then potable water could be fed down here, or wherever, and where it's needed, and so, we're really excited about that, that's gonna be great for this end, and the pipeline that would bring that could bring strawberry water, that's been treated here, and it would be, it would be potable.
So if I may, can I share with you our long-range water rights for the city, right now, we believe that we have about 94% of the water rights that we need for a theoretical build-out, at a medium-ish density, to some theoretical build-out, now, that can change, and you know, wells can go down, we can have problems, we can have, you know, aquifer contamination, which we hope we don't, we're not planning for that, but there's all types of things that can happen, but our biggest need in our water rights right now is outdoor needs, which again, this can certainly help with, but the option, or at least the opportunity to have drinking water, even as a redundant source, even if it's not something that we're that we're short on, again, think of a couple of years ago, and we had a couple of wells go down on July 24th, and that just gives us options to be able to have that water, again, it's probably, that plant is probably, and pipeline are probably 10, 15, 20 years in the future, but it gives us options, so, that just gonna give you an idea of where we're at as a city with our water rights, for drinking water.
Okay, again, referring to the minutes, the city manager and the mayor discussed the costs associated with transfers, fees and things, and that they would be addressed by agreements reviewed by the staff, is that in process, has that been done, or is that going to be done?
Again, there's nothing on the doorstep that's causing us to have those discussions right now, what my thought has been, and what I alluded to in those, in that meeting, was, you know, if somebody wants to do this, and we want to look at it and go, okay, we don't, we as a city don't want to have the long-term cost of having to pay the assessments or the carrier water, we can certainly enter into a discussion or an agreement with the person that wants to bring that water, that they pay for that, right now, that's not set up, but that is certainly something that we could do, and again, because there's nothing on the doorstep, we've not gotten that far yet.
Okay.
But we plan to, yes.
I know that Brian mentioned the fact that it would be a good idea to have two individuals involved, and I noticed in the contract that that does exist, and I feel like that's important, so thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions, or?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Does this mean that if we had a developer that bought property in Santaquin City, and that came with irrigation water rights, that they could transfer those rights, and that we can use them as a city?
So, the answer to that is yes, we don't, we don't get the water rights, but we get a long-term agreement that is based on the water rights, which are 1890s decrees, I mean, these are the best water rights in the state, and so, in essence, in kind of a nutshell, the Strawberry Valley project and strawberry water is the best water in the state, and because of that, us being able to use that in perpetuity through these third-party agreements, is absolutely something that will allow that water to come to us, absolutely, that is exactly what we're talking about.
But does it transfer like so, if he said, okay, well, we have the water rights, we're gonna sell that with the property, so if we require a developer to bring water to make a new subdivision, is that gonna fulfill that requirement?
This could fulfill that requirement, that's correct, yep, absolutely.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's really.
Again, flexibility and options are things that, again, in my 18 years, I've always wondered how we're gonna do that, we're gonna put pump stations on the canal, for instance, this makes it so we don't have to do that, and have all that extra infrastructure cost and pumping costs, et cetera, it comes to us with the best water in the state.
And pressurized.
Pressurized, clean, I mean, it's clean, you know, it's not drinking water, don't get me wrong, but that's why they're building a drinking water plant, but it's much cleaner than some of the rivers that we have farther down here, absolutely.
Yeah, it's really great water, and these connections provide some redundancy to all the water systems, if you did have a well go down, or a spring get contaminated or something, you can now rely on Central Utah to provide water to make up for it.
I'm gonna cue the mayor, is there any other questions, or mayor, I think we're done with questions and discussion, if you want to move forward.
Okay, then, what I need is a motion to accept the resolution 0903, 2025, for authorizing the execution of documents related to the conversion of the Strawberry Project water from agricultural use for miscellaneous purposes and related matters.
So moved. Seconded?
Is there a second?
You had a motion and a second, that's correct mayor.
Okay, Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Thank you, go on to the next one, ordinances, the ordinance amending the future land use map of the general plan for Santaquin City, this is in a historical agricultural lands that we're talking about in specific, but it will carry across wherever it's due, and Jason, are you gonna handle that?
Sure, I can do that mayor, and I guess mayor, for your information, while we were talking on the last agenda, we have Veronica Jackson who came into the room, and a guest, maybe a granddaughter, so, she's here, and obviously, part of this general plan, proposed amendment is, in response to some interest that her family has with the property they own in the northeast section of Santaquin City, so, on the map, essentially what the proposed changes are, is, like I say, on the northeast corner, you can see that there's that purple area that's labeled CMU, that includes the Fields property, and just the land that's between the Fields property and Highway 198, in addition, just to the north of that, you can see that red shape, kind of shaped like the state of Nevada with the C on it, that's proposed to be commercial, and part of the reason why we've looked at that, and obviously, there's a specific proposal that has been discussed with the city council, but we thought while we're in the general plan, and while we're talking about the vision and plans for land uses in this area, we thought we'd look at other pieces of property, I mean, we could, we could have gone further, and talked about more, more land that could be developed somewhat other way in the future, and that always can be done, the general plan's, you know, not set in stone, it's more of a fluid document, but we knew for sure that it made sense that that, that commercial area would make sense to be commercial, because that is right on the corner of a future interchange, now, that interchange may not happen for years, but nonetheless, with the future interchange, obviously, land uses tend to go more commercial around interchange, there was actually a little bit of land uses that were removed from this map as well, and part of the reason for that is because of the pending incorporation of Spring Lake, and some of the areas that they show as being incorporated, covered some of the areas that we had on our future land use map, now, the future land use map is not just looking at future land uses for areas that are currently within Santaquin City limits, but really, it was looking at areas that were unincorporated as well, and were anticipated that could be considered for annexation, were shown in our annexation policy plan, so, we removed those areas, because they're gonna be incorporated now into another jurisdiction, and we've shown you the couple land uses that we thought were really, you know, made sense of not just what's kind of on the table right now as a proposal, but also what would inevitably come with, with further development in the form of an interchange, so, this is the first step in really looking closer at that property, you know, we've worked with the Fields family, and Veronica, who's in the room, and this kind of gives the, you know, addressing the general plan is the first step to give the indication that there's some interest in looking closer at that areas, as being a different land use than what the general plan shows, after the general plan, we'll continue to work with, you know, I'm working with Brett right now on a development agreement, a proposed development agreement to consider, and then there may be a zoning component, either in that development agreement, or some other zoning change that would go in conjunction with the negotiations that we're having with the Fields family, so, this is the first step, this is just amending the general plan, but it's amending the general plan in a way that would be in harmony with some of the discussions and proposals that are on the table.
Do you want to make a statement on the recommendation from the planning zoning on this particular issue?
Sure, and this did go to the planning commission, it did get a public hearing, and I don't think there was any, any strong opposition to what was being discussed there, Jeff, I don't know if you have any more, I know you're the council representative at planning commission, but, yeah, so, it has gone through the appropriate process for your consideration tonight.
Okay, are there any questions, or anything you would like to ask, even to Veronica, do you have a statement or anything you'd like to make?
Mayor, she says she's good.
I'll get even with you. Okay, then I would entertain a motion for ordinance 0901, for amending the future land use of the map for the general plan of the city as we've discussed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Motion passed, we can move on to the next, Lynn, and thanks for coming Veronica.
She said thank you mayor.
Okay, discussion and possible action for the award of the engineering services for Hanson Allen and Luce for the culinary water pressurized irrigation data tables, the master plan, the IFFP and IFA, and the rest of the items, including the sanitary sewer, so, Norm, do you want to introduce it, and would you like to have any of those from Hanson Allen and Luce speak for just a minute?
Yeah, I'll introduce it, as we talked about two weeks ago, these, this is kind of a new look, a new way to look at doing our, especially our impact fees. of a new look, a new way to look at doing our, especially our impact fees and keeping them up to date. We've talked about the fact that that once every five years is not keeping us up with the need that we have to cover costs. Again, I would just use as as an example, right now, we've got thirteen million dollars in sewer improvements that are needed and about ten million dollars worth of funds to be able to do that. That's the reason that we're bonding right now. Now, those are round numbers, but what this does is this gets us on a timetable to be able to allow us to, first of all, update our master plans becau- two of them, the PI and the culinary, because they are out five years. By the time this gets done, January of twenty twenty one was the year and date that they were done or five years ago. So, we're right on that five year schedule for the PI and the culinary. The sewer master plan is not included in this. Just the data tables and the IFFP, IFA and and impact fees and user rates are included in the sanitary sewer because we still have two years left before we have to update that master plan. But what this does, and you may have seen it, I I think I mentioned it in my memo, that although there are numbers and estimates in there for us for the next five years, each individual year for both the data tables, impact fees and the master plan updates for the PI and culinary, those are not included in the budget amendment that we just did and not included in the work that will be done this fiscal year. Just what needs to be done this fiscal year, again, master plan, IFFP, IFA, impact fees, rate study for PI and culinary and just those lasting items for the sanitary sewer. And this will get us on a much better schedule to be able to keep us up to date on our impact fees. And and hopefully, I I don't guarantee this, but hopefully, we won't have to bond or won't have to bond for as much as we move forward. We can continue to to look at inflationary costs and making sure that we're updating those every single year. If you remember, it's two thousand twenty two, eight percent inflation, that's just one year, just, I think we're over the last five or six years, I think we're in the thirty percent inflation over the last five or six years, it's pretty, been pretty significant. So, I'm happy to answer.
The one thing that does need to be said here is all of the impact fees, we are audited on constantly. That, this is watched over by the legislature, by the state in every possible way, and they they've got all of the builders and everybody else in tune with what's going on with impact fees. Impact fees really don't affect all the old citizens that have already paid their impact fees to get their home into town and to hook up to the sewer and to take care of all the water and that that we've all invested in. And what this does is help in the future, all of the citizens not to have to pay for that, all of the present citizens not to have to pay for the growth that we go through to maintain as well as build some of these things. And and we're doing that building right now with this change to our turd mill.
So, yeah, mayor and council, I I would just back up what you said, and that is that that part of their Hanson Allen and Luce's work and our work that we've done over the last five years is that we involve the Home Builders Association. We want them to make sure that they understand where we're coming from. We want them to understand our master plans and our IFFPs and IFAs and our impact fees because we don't want to be challenged. One of the things that that Hanson Allen and Luce does and they're stamped on that, they certify that these are done according to state standards and state requirements for both the the plans, the IFFPs, the IFAs and the impact fees. They certify that at the end of the day when we get their final product. And that's something that's very important to us because one of the things in the, in the, in the state is that the impact fees has to have to be defensible. You can't just go willy nilly, you can't go, well, we think it's this much, that's again, one of the reasons why all of this data will help us to be much more accurate and much better about that and and not have huge swings upward in the impact fees. Any questions for myself or for Chris Thompson?
I would just like to have a discussion. I have really struggled with with doing this. Couple of questions. In the memo we received, there are sufficient funds within each respective impact fee funds to cover these contract costs. For this year only, for ongoing?
For for this year only, but as the, as the costs are smaller next year, though, there will be sufficient funds next year. We don't budget more than a year out right now, so I I can't tell you what happens. That will actually go through the budget processes as we, as we go through our budgeting planning next year. And those, I think it's around twenty thousand dollars, sixteen to twenty thousand dollar yearly updates for for all three of those will be included in impact fee projects as we go forward in future years. And and again, they're cancelable. If we decide next year that this isn't working for us or that we need to make a change, then we make a change. We have the ability to do that in the agreement.
If we were to have a massive shutdown on growth and impact fees dwindled, then the, this would have to be funded in some other manner?
Correct.
Okay.
But this would help us adjust, if I understand right, this would also help us adjust to that, right? Without that, we're still, we're not adjusting that yearly, we're adjusting that in five years. So, this would help that too, if I, if I understand it right.
Yeah, yeah, it allows you to adjust to the changing conditions a lot easier than than before, but let's say growth shut down completely and you felt like your impact fees didn't need to change, you would not spend any more money on them. It's kind of rare that.
So if there wasn't an update, sorry, if there wasn't an update needed, then there wouldn't be an expense?
Yeah, it it would be up to you. If if there was no need, then you wouldn't, you're not obligated to do the next update.
Okay, thank you.
So, so there's no future. But but it's kind of rare that the the less expensive way is the much better way. And really, that's what happens here, and it's not magical. I I can explain why it's less expensive. When when you come in after five years and hire a firm to do your impact fee study or your master plan, even if that firm did your original study or plan, they hadn't looked at it for five years. And it takes a fair amount of mobilization to get their engineers up to speed on what's going on in the city and 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 get them up to date on things. And and quite often, after five years, the the studies or the plans are quite stale. And and almost even with the same firms, you'll see that the studies are completely redone in five years. So, you're, you're paying for a whole new study. And then the last thing, that big thing that kind of influences it is, is throughout the year, when planning and zoning has developers come in and they say, well, we want to look at this particular area, they will do what are called site specific studies on, you know, lift stations or whatever, what it would take to 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 develop those areas. Well, often, if if you're a normal city, those little studies kind of get lost from the master plans and from the impact fees if if it's another four years before those are are redone. Doing them every year brings them in and and it preserves that that work that's already been done on the, on the city. It's, it's not magical at all, it's just a really good, solid way to to do your impact fees and your master plans. I'll tell you what, on impact fees, it's about the same cost. If if you take the cost after five years versus paying for it every year, I I ran the numbers a number of times and it and it's about the same. The way you save money on impact fees is in the eight percent years or the years where you have inflation, when you account for that inflation every year, it saves you millions of dollars. And so, that is a big issue. On master plans, it does save significant amount of money. Master plans are very expensive to do, but they're not expensive to just keep up to date. And it it saves you over half the cost on that. So, so this is a very fiscally sound way to do it.
If I understand this process correctly, then it's being funded by the new residents that move in either this year or next year or the next and not by the current residents, is that correct?
Yeah, and it's my opinion, and I I was on your side of the world for my old career for thirty one years, but it's my opinion, this is the only way to ensure that. If you, if you, if you go every five, seven years, like most cities, you're basically saying, we are going to pay the cost, some of the cost of new residents with with existing resident funds. There's just no other way to do it. You can't with, with the impact fee laws, the way that they are, you cannot create a fee that will last through five years or seven years or even two years.
I just wanted the public that we represent to clearly understand what we're doing and why and appreciate us having the opportunity to do this and and follow through, so thank you.
I I have always respected Norm and and the operation here. I've, I have a lot of friends here that have been active politically and 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 just I am really excited to be on the Santaquin team and and to help out in any way I can. This, this is, this is, I I left this earlier today, I just said, this is the city I I really, really am excited to work for as much as any others. And and but that's a biased opinion that this is smart. Let me tell you an unbiased opinion that this is the right way to do it, and that's the Home Builders Association. They, they represent the people who pay these impact fees. And and it's, it's really interesting, I get calls all the time from people saying the Home Builders Association have told me to please hire Hanson Allen and Luce to do what they're doing with with these annual updates because it is so much better for for who they represent. The five year update really is 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 hard on the developers and home builders in that they, they, they come in, they say, well, we're going to build a hundred lots here. And those hundred lots, we plan on paying X dollars on impact fees. Usually, it's in the twenty thousand dollar range or, you know, fifteen thousand dollar range. Well, if you wait five years to do an update on your impact fee, they're going to go from like twelve thousand to twenty thousand. They'll almost double, in almost every case, when you wait five to seven years, they they go up that significantly. Well, if you're a developer and you have your return on investment figured out based on this cost and all of a sudden overnight it jumps to this cost, it's so hard on them. And they, they, they are companies that need to have a profit. And 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 whenever you make it that difficult for for a company like that, they are going to fight back and push back. And a lot of cities have seen that, most, most cities that update their impact fees every five to seven years have had a lot of opposition from the Home Builders Association. And and the ones that have been sued have been in that camp. And so, that's an unbiased opinion that this is the right way to do it. Mine's a little bit biased, but I I formed it when I was sitting in in your chairs over here, so I I I feel like it's, it's a really fantastic thing.
Thank you. For my own curiosity, I know IFA stands for Intermountain Farmers Association, but what does the other one, IFFP, stand for?
So sorry, those are engineering acronyms. So, you have a master plan that typically has a capital facilities plan. The IFFP is a new document since two thousand and fifteen ish that the legislature put in place, it's called an impact fee facilities plan, which is a shortened version of the capital facilities plan to get you six to ten years. And then you have the IFA, which is the impact fee analysis, that's the financial side of it. So, the master plan looks at the whole system, capital facilities looks at what you're going to build in the system to get to a theoretical build out, the IFFP shrinks that down, and then the IFA is the financial side of things.
Thank you.
You bet.
I do, I do want to say that I think this is a very smart way to go because we not only represent the city in being, being progressive enough that we are looking out for the present residents as well as the future residents as they come in, that they're not having problems as they're getting houses built, there's expectation that sitting there and that's being covered every year pretty much if we need to. Okay, are there any other questions, anything we need to go over? Then I would like to entertain a motion on the award of this engineering service contract.
I'll make a motion that we approve that action, award the engineering services contract to Hanson Allen and Luce for the culinary water and pressure irrigation data tables creation, master plan IFFP and IFA impact fees updates and user rate studies and sanitary sewer data tables creation, IFA impact fees updates and user rate study.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks, Chris, for coming in, I appreciate it. Why don't we move on and get to the reports from the officers? Jason, do you want to go?
Sure. Yeah, mayor and council, since the last time we met, we did get the report back the, from the state for moderate income housing, and we were deemed to be compliant with all five of our strategies. So, there's no, no follow up that we need to do there. And being compliant with all five of those strategies means that we're on the priority list for transportation funding, if that comes into play. So, appreciate Ryan Harris, who's, he doesn't work here anymore, but he was a big part of getting those strategies implemented, and then Aspen, who who is our current planner in in helping with that and getting the report submitted. So, that's good news. It just means now we're into a new year and we have to start thinking about the next year, but we'll, we'll work to better understand what the new year looks like because obviously, the whole moderate income housing world is, has been a little bit fluid and and requirements have changed and.
If those plans are working, do we have to change them every year?
Well, so, each year, the, the strategies are are very specific. Sometimes those strategies can be kind of a, a carrying over the progress that we're making. Some of the strategies, you know, there's kind of a, an action that's taking place, and so, we kind of move on to to the next action or build upon that action that we've already made. And so, that, that's something that we look at. I mean, some of these strategies, when we originally started doing this a couple years ago, we, we did them in a way that we can kind of replicate those strategies, like, for instance, you know, expanding another zone where detached accessory dwelling units are allowed, or, you know, another master plan being approved and and considering impact fees for, you know, an impact fee reduction for accessory dwelling units or things, things of that nature. So, yeah, we will carry on with kind of what we've done and 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 continue to to be in compliance with state requirements. Just upcoming meeting agenda items for you. Next Tuesday, we have DRC and Planning Commission. For DRC, we're anticipating that we'll have the Scenic Ridge Estates Phase C final plat. This is the development that's way up on the east bench, so it's another phase of their development. And we may have a traffic control request, but we're still not sure on on if that's going to go through for next Tuesday or not. For Planning Commission, we have a public hearing set for a major home occupation. This is for Oak Stand Studio. You might have noticed there was an Oak Stand Studio business license that was on the report I gave earlier. This is another one. But it's in a different home, and they are showing on their application a different owner who's who's living there, so we'll see how that goes. I know this, that went concurrently with the other one, and there were some, some concerns and issues with that application, so the Planning Commission will be, will be reviewing this resubmitment for for this particular home occupation. That may be it for for Planning Commission. Just a couple, couple other updates for you. We are, are close, we're waiting to hear back from the state, but we're close to having another general plan amendment. This is basically incorporating a wa- a water element into our general plan. This is another requirement from the state. We've been working with Hanson Allen and Luce actually, and in getting that, that water element ready to go. Because we had a grant to to create that water element, that's why we need to run this by the state before, we can have, have it before you for your consideration to approve it and and put it into the general plan. So, that's something that you can expect will, will be coming forward in an upcoming meeting here shortly. Aside from that, you know, I guess, I guess for those that would like to participate and been involved, we're getting closer and closer to Columbus Day. I think you all know, on Columbus Day, we usually will close the city offices, not, not for the holiday itself, but we'll, we'll close them so that we can focus on a training for all of our employees, and usually incorporate a, a service project. And so, we're working on getting speakers and 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 a service project going, and so we would invite you to participate if you're able to. I believe Columbus Day this year is October thirteenth, so that's something that you can look forward to. And aside from that, I don't really have anything else to report on tonight.
Okay, Norm?
Yeah, so mayor and council, the mayor and I and Brett and Emily have been working with with the bond attorneys and the bond counsel and the bank. We did get some favorable bond documents back, offers bids on the sewer bonds. I'm going to pull that up for you now so that you can see kind of where, this is just a snapshot. This is, these are not the documents. This is just a snapshot of what we're looking at for amortization costs, interest costs, et cetera. Fairly favorable. The loan starts out at 3.3%, which is pretty darn good for right now. And most municipal bonds right now on a straight 10- to 20-year bond are about 4.5%. So we start out fairly low. It does start moving up a little bit. And at the end, it goes up to a little higher than what we may want. But one of the things that we did was we, at the mayor and I's direction, we've directed them on a 15-year note, gives us about a $290,000 payment every year. Again, those are planned to be paid with impact fees as the growth continues to occur. But one of the things that we've done, we did look at a 10-year bond, but because of just not wanting to get too tight on cash flow and other considerations, we moved it to a 15-year. We can still pay on a 10-year note and pay it off in 10 years. And that's our goal is to pay it off faster than what the amortization schedule does. But that still keeps us into the, you know, still into the very low fours to mid-fours on the interest rates, which is really, really good. That will be closing here in the next day or two. And then we will have the funds. And subsequent to that, we will have, you remember, there's a couple of contracts. We need a change order with JUV, sorry, not a change order, but a construction administration, construction engineering contract for them. And also with VanCon to continue to do the work that they bid at the 9.3-something million that we put in place on the guaranteed maximum price. There's still almost a million and a half to $2 million that's still hanging out there to complete this project. And again, we've talked about that this bonding is, in our opinion, the best way to go so that we can get the whole project done now and not have increased costs at some future inflation that we don't know about. And yes, we're paying some interest on it, but it's fairly reasonable. I think the last time we talked about interest rates, we were close to 6% is the last interest rate that we talked about a couple of years ago with what was going on in the municipal market.
It's being speculated that the feds will reduce interest rates tomorrow. Would this affect this? Would that affect this?
It will not affect this at all. The bids have already come in. The bond documents are ready to go. And that's where we stand on that. Again, there are no prepayment penalties. This bond allows us to pay it off tomorrow if we want to. We obviously wouldn't do that. But as growth occurs and we're able to pay that off, our financial plan is to pay it off sooner than the 15 years and those higher interest rates that we see there at the end. Happy to answer any questions that you have on that. I can also update you on the Main Street project. The Main Street project is coming to a close. You can see that they've got nearly all of the asphalt down. They've still got some driveways and tiebacks and other things to do for private properties. All of the roadway asphalt, I think, is done for both us and UDOT. They're still doing the stamped color concrete. The landscaping will go in at a later date. Our side of things is to do the trees. Their side of things is to do the irrigation for the trees for us. And so we're getting close to that. They have indicated that they're planning on tentatively, this is not a hard date, but the end of October being off-site and being done with the project. They've still got quite a bit of landscape work to do to kind of make yards whole, including ours in front of the public safety building. Grass, sprinklers, other things are still going on. I will report on the CUP project. There were three of us in the room here that were able, four of us that were able to attend the lunch last week for the CUP, last pipe laying. The mayor and I were able to go out in the field and see that. That's quite a maneuver to put a 30-foot stick of pipe in the ground. That's about 8,000 pipes over the 17 miles of pipeline that they've laid in the last few years. It's quite the mechanism. It was great to see. And we're excited to have that. The plan on that also, again, is to finish it up this year as far as water testing and have it functional for us next year.
And we have our names on it.
The mayor has his name on the pipe. So this is good. Santaquin City and Mayor Dan Olson are on the pipe. So he's left his mark. That was a fun, that was a fun day. That literally is 110 years' worth of history with that pipe going in the ground. And that is the mechanism or one of the mechanisms that, as Chris Thompson was talking about, that could eventually bring drinking water to our area should we need it. Pretty cool. That's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Let's move on. Art, do you want to go?
Okay. Last Monday, we had the My Hometown project, which was more of a success, I think, than anyone involved imagined. It was great. It's neat to see what our community is capable of doing together. This Saturday is the culmination of a three-day project for My Hometown. It's involving not sandblasting the other one, power washing a house and then painting it, but also Highland Drive will be cleaned up as far as trash and litter and that kind of stuff. If you're interested in participating, meet at 8:00 in the morning on Saturday at the building at 300 West and 100 North. I told the mayor that I would represent the city on Friday at the West Les Schwab grand opening. I'm not able to do that. I have an appointment up in Salt Lake. And I know that Norman, the mayor, will be gone. I'm wondering if maybe Jason, as the assistant city manager, could represent the city.
I will be around, but I will be off that day.
Okay. Mountainland Technical College has an open house on Friday, September 19th, in Payson for their campus community. And then on Saturday, the 20th of September, there is the Emergency Preparedness Fair at Payson City Office Building regarding most anything that you'd be interested in as far as emergency preparedness is concerned. And Jason, have you got any feedback yet about an ARC meeting?
Still waiting for emails back on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Art?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jeff?
All right. We had an LPC meeting yesterday. So that was a lot of fun. You're going, it looks like, if I remember right, just off the top of my head, we're going to be expecting some tax and housing bills coming through next February. So, yeah, they're trying to stay busy up there at the Capitol and fix things. So we'll see how that goes. Last night was the last hometown market of the season. So no more of those until probably next June, maybe May. It was not as well-attended as other weeks, but it was still a lot of fun. Hispanic night was good. And it's still about a month, a little over a month away, but spooky night of the museum's coming up, October 24th through 28th. Put that on your calendar. It is always, I don't even have little kids anymore, I still go. It's a lot of fun. They deck that place out really well. I think they're doing it right now. They're getting ready for it. Takes a lot of work. That's all I've got.
Hey, I have a question for you, Jeff. Are you going to help with bikes for kids this year?
I was planning on it.
Do you want to see if we could maybe start making any contacts, see what we've got to do, make our plan, and see if we can get on that in the next month?
Yeah.
Even the next two weeks?
Yeah, I'll talk to John about that. He usually kind of spearheads it a little bit. So I will do that.
Okay, thanks. I want to help too. So I'll be there.
Okay.
All right, Lynn?
Nothing for me tonight.
Travis?
YCC helped out with My Hometown. I didn't know what to expect, but I did not expect that. There were so many people and we gave away so many donuts. And I didn't even eat one that time.
Well, I did.
There was like 600 donuts and we just couldn't even keep them on the table fast enough. We gave away cotton candy, popcorn. It was a great event. Well-attended. I was really impressed. They really threw that together.
I counted.
Hopefully, everything they do will be that impressive. So that's all I've got.
I know they made room.
You know, I do want to say one thing. I thank you all for participating in My Hometown. And Art, thank you for being around and in the middle of most things. Anywhere I was, I felt like you had already talked to those folks as we were going through. But as I spoke with the 70 that was there, the Elder Mills, and some of the others, especially those that had come down from Salt Lake, they said they had never been to one that was as well-presented, as well-attended, and was so fun to be at as ours was. And I think the biggest thing you could say from that is we not only have the first 10-week class already for sewing signed up and ready to go, they've got the next 10-week class already to go too.
Yeah.
And that's only a part of it. So there are other classes that are being put together and people are signing up each and every day. I think Calvin and Natalie Davis are really doing a heck of a job bringing everything together. So I know with the work that they're going to be doing this week, I'll probably have a little time to get with it. So thanks for everybody. And tell the YSA, Colleen and I both went there. We had donuts. I didn't. I didn't get one. They were gone. But I did get popcorn and that was really good. So it was good. I think it was really good. And what was the final number? 999 or 998?
Something like that, yes, sir.
That's correct. I know they ran out of hot dogs and had to go resupply. I don't know.
Multiple times.
Yeah, I talked to... This is a great city. Thank you all for everything that you do. I would apologize for having to be on Zoom tonight, but I am in one of the most beautiful places in the world and I have a satellite hookup and a generator going. And I'm able to make this happen. And so thank you all. Thanks for everything that you've done. I don't have a closed session tonight. I'm not there. So I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Nope.
You guys want to stay?
I'll second it.
Jeez. Okay, Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
I'm thinking. Yes, aye.